Maybe it's like a fancy new slang term for a breezy day. It's Fabreezy here.
Polly, don't look so proud of yourself.
Well, I'm always proud of myself. Are you kidding?
Yeah, I have no idea.
Alright, let the show begin huh?
You know, I would have never thought of anything like that.
Hey, it runs.
Absolutely.
I'm not into that. Hip, uh, hip slang.
I don't know.
Well, me either, but I don't know.
I'm too old for that new age slang.
New age, the, the new age slang of Fabreezy?
Yep. It's these days and they're slang.
When are we gonna stop talking about Fabreeze? What is it? Nobody knows, no one cares. Stop.
Well, some people care. I'm curious.
Maybe it's French.
Save curiosity for the bedroom.
Hmm.
Like fresh breeze.
No, no, no. That kind of curiosity is the stuff you can't show in public. You should always be curious and ask questions though.
You just can't get caught.
Well, yeah.
About with what?
Don't worry about it, Sal. We'll tell you when you're older.
Aw, I'm twenty-three.
Gentleman.
Still a baby.
Just a baby.
I'm doing good, how are you?
Everybody always makes fun of me for my age. You're not old, Sal. I'm just a baby.
Did you say he's not old?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Plus, I'm not from this country either.
Sal, how old are you?
Twenty-three.
You're just a baby.
Oh, thanks.
No, you're pretty much average age around here, I think.
Really?
Yeah, I don't, I think, you know, there's a couple of us that skew the bell curve, but otherwise.
And I sit back here and enjoy the news.
Quiet, Polly.
Oh, yeah.
Why should we do that?
Yeah, well, I'm calling myself out too, honey.
Yeah, someone's a rude shit. Look at the stick, Charles' hat.
How old are you, Charles? Forty-two?
That's, no. We didn't talk about it.
Well, hey, Ashley.
Alright, everybody able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
Nope. Barely.
Barely.
Raise your hand if you can hear the, the, my, mayor.
The people in the back can barely hear him.
Yeah, people in the back can hear. Al, why don't you just come up to the, the front podium here and start yelling? And by Al, I mean your honor.
What the hell?
Oh, I do know Al now.
Yeah, that's, that's the first, uh, you know, task of mayor, uh, navigate those seats.
Hi, honey.
Hey.
Hey, honey.
Excuse me, hey, hello?
Hey, honey, buddy.
Hey. Did I miss much?
Alright, everybody in the back able to hear me?
You didn't miss anything.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mayor.
They can hear you.
Wonderful, wonderful, okay.
I'm so sorry.
Alright, show this city council meeting on, uh, June first of, uh, nineteen eighty-six in session. Uh, for those of you that don't know me, uh, my name is Alistair Humphries. I was the, uh, deputy mayor for Banner Fox. Uh, unfortunately Banner Fox has been on a leave of absence for a few weeks at this point. Uh, so in his absence, I have been filling the shoes of his role. Uh, I apologize for not showing face as much as I probably should have. Uh, there's a lot that needs to be, uh, caught up on and worked out with a situation like this. Uh, so I want to first and foremost apologize for, uh, my absence. Secondly, uh, we had an election for our remaining, uh, city council seats. Uh, there were three people that decided to run, so we will be filling those three seats here tonight. Uh, seat number one to be filled, uh, Timothy Bradford. Timothy, are you here tonight?
I am.
Timothy, congratulations. Everybody, please give Timothy a round of applause for your, uh, fifth city council member.
Congrats, Tim.
Congratulations, Tim.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Congratulations, Tim.
You're not gonna sit by me, sugar. God damn it.
I gotta sit by Gilbert.
Damn it. I'm gonna have to trade seats now.
Alright, our second seat being filled, uh, Sal Spigoni.
Right here.
Yes, Sally.
Sally.
Thank you.
And our third and final seat, uh, Daniel DeLeon. Daniel here tonight?
He is not present tonight.
Okay. Unfortunately, Mr. DeLeon could not make it tonight, but he is your, uh, seventh city council member.
Seriously? Wow.
That does mean that we do have one remaining seat. Uh, at this point, so that way we have a, uh, full council. Uh, I think we will leave it until we have a, uh, all the members are present before we fill the next seat. I just wanna get everybody's input first and foremost, uh, about what we wanna do with that.
Okay.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Um, one thing that I want to, uh, address to everybody is this position is a new thing for me. Some of you know me a lot more than others. I used to be around a lot and lately I haven't been around as much as I should be in order to fill the shoes of previous mayors that we've had. I'm just, I haven't been able to show face as much as I would have liked to. And I want to apologize for that, uh, and in order to make it fair to the people, I don't think that it's right for me to be up here and not being able to be present as much as I should be. Uh, so I just wanna make it aware that after, uh, tonight, I'm gonna be leaving the deputy mayor position and will be setting it up for, uh, another election to possibly come around debating on whether the council wants to put in a vote of no confidence on, uh, Mr. Banner Fox.
That makes perfect sense. Yeah, we'll get to it.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, do any, uh, councilmen have any, uh, legislation or anything they would like to bring to the table?
You wanna go first, Smokey?
Yeah, mine, mine will be fast.
Yeah, alright.
Um, so as far as legislation goes, I am in the process of working with my fellow council members to, uh, begin drafting a athletic association bill. So if there are any individuals in the city who have familiarity running any kind of tournaments, sports enterprises, please reach out to me. Um, and I would be more than happy to get your input on, uh, that legislation during the drafting process. Um, more importantly, uh, today we lost, as I'm sure many of you are aware, a, uh, pillar of this community in Connor Fitzgerald.
What?
Connor was a mentor of mine. He was a friend and was growing to be like a brother to me and he deserved so much better than what, what occurred today. And I would just like to, if everybody wouldn't mind, uh, just a quick moment of silence for him. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam.
Councilmember, uh, Gilbert Brown. A couple of things I wanted to bring up. The first one is just sort of for everyone in attendance here. It's just to have a reminder to have proper decorum for these meetings and into the future. I know the last couple of meetings that we've had, there's been a lot of, um, shouting from the, from the seats. Uh, please, just remember that if you do have anything you want to say, please form a nice orderly line back here for the podium and only speak once you get to the podium or if you are requested. Uh, we are going to start implementing a three-strike system where you'll get a warning followed by a, uh, second harder warning, a third warning, you will be removed from the building. So.
Well, that's not good.
Alright. Uh, so that's the first thing I wanted to bring up. The second thing I wanted to bring up is in regards to the mayor position. Uh, position of mayor is a key held in this city. They are the one who is representing all of the people and is the one who is the head of the city council. Any legislation that the city wants to bring forward is, you know, to be brought forward to the mayor, voted upon. And I understand that there is, you know, there may be some things going on with, uh, Mayor Banner. However, his absence has been noticed by a lot of people. I have heard a lot of people complaining around the city about his absence. And I personally believe that we need a mayor who is willing to be around, can be around, uh, to represent the city. So I'd like to motion a vote of no confidence for Mr. Banner to have him removed as mayor.
Here, here.
I will second that motion.
I will third that motion.
I will fourth that motion.
Yep, yep, we, it's fine, thank you.
You just need three to bring it to a vote.
So we can leave this up to have people come up if they would like to give their side or their arguments. And we will, uh, we can have a discussion about this prior to voting.
Robert Daynob. Uh, and, uh, yeah, I, I, I was actually privy to a conversation that, uh, shouldn't be hidden. It's, it's perfectly fine and I'm very warranted that they had the conversation beforehand with the council members. And they all made some very incredible points. I can't disagree with anything any of them said. But my personal opinion is that you don't penalize somebody for life. You, what if something tragic happened? We don't know. And, and I, I, like I said, I understand what you're saying. I, I agree with what you're saying. But my personal opinion and me being me, I gotta give the benefit of the doubt, but most of you already know I'm that kind of person. And, uh, after the council meetings, uh, the councilmen are done and you open up for public forum, I'd be more than happy to discuss, uh, uh, what went on with, uh, the empty seat not being seated. Uh, I can't help but feel like, uh, it's because I think, uh, some of you guys knew that I had this objection. Um, just might not be, it's just I can't help but think. And, uh, you know, I'll, you guys make the call you're gonna make. I, I, that's why I was quiet when you asked. Everybody's on the same page. I understand where you're coming from. I, I just agree with it.
Uh, just a comment on that. Um, first and foremost, in, in our discussion, we are more than happy to have you seated as a member of the council. Do not think that, you know, having differing opinions or anything like that is a reason why you're not seated. I believe Alistair just wanted to have a talk regarding that ahead of time, but if we need to, after this, uh, discussion, we can um, temporarily table the motion for the mayor vote in order to discuss that if you wish, prior to the vote.
Uh, I, you know my feelings, uh, it's, it's, I, like I said, I'm just one, if I was on the council, I'd only be one vote. And, and, and I, I'm listening to what you guys say and you all have valid points.
Uh, Mr. Daynob, I'm looking at the, uh, election results from the previous election, uh, to where you were the remaining one that, uh, was to be seated because only three ran this time.
Yes.
And then you are more than welcome to take your seat at the council.
But I thought that you were gonna table whether to see me talk that the council was over or till next week.
Like I said, I, I don't have no formula structure here. I'm, I'm winging it. I was put into this position to work with Banner and I'm just as lost as the rest of us are.
Yeah, and, and I get that.
And that's on my part.
Please, please, I, please, I, I understand, but, uh, you know, I, I would only do that if that's what the council wished also because, you know, when that was put out, none, no one said anything. And if they would rather wait and have that discussion, it's up to the, the council. I, I, like I said, I, I, I will pursue it, uh, further about why I think, uh, it's unconstitutional after you, after everybody else is done, when you open up to the public, unless the council wants me up there.
I was under the impression that.
As was I.
Yeah, same.
As was I.
I honestly thought that that was what was already discussed.
I thought this was already settled as well.
This isn't a problem with the council not voting you. This is a problem with me being an idiot.
And I hope you understand why I would think that after, you know.
Of course.
Yeah, where I was coming from.
Okay, so with that, uh, taken care of. Uh, I, and I understand your argument about, you know, things in life happen. And the problem though is that if, you know, how long, I'm gonna sound like an asshole for saying this, but how long things, you know, take to, you know, be taken care of? It's kind of important because you can't just have a position vacant for a long time. And I understand, yes, there is, yes, there is a deputy mayor. I know. But at the same time, the deputy mayor position is a position that is appointed by the mayor not voted in.
As it's written in the constitution, it is an appointed position by the mayor. You are correct.
Yes. But again, having proper representation, we just went a whole month of having these elections for city council members because people had complained about their not having their voice heard and not having the chance to vote because everyone was appointed. So this is simply, you know, Mayor's not here and he hasn't been here for the past month. It's, I think it's fair to say that the city deserves to have a mayor who's present. And that if you would like to run for mayor, you're perfectly open to running. That way at least the people can vote for who they want to be mayor, have a say.
Let me ask you, let, let, let me, let me open it up to the people. Uh, when you vote for somebody or you're voting for them with a hundred percent trust into them doing their position, correct? For the most part, right?
Sure.
That's the whole point of why you vote for someone because you trust them over the other candidates.
Because I don't trust anybody a hundred percent. There's, that's, that's.
I trust politicians even less.
Fair enough.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Fair. Let's put it this way. If you're voting for somebody, you're voting for them for a reason. Now, I've heard from a lot of people, they didn't necessarily vote for Banner Fox. Uh, but there's people that did and that's why that he won the election. If you voted for that person, you voted for their, their ideals, their reasonings, and you put some level of trust into them. Meaning that if they are to appoint a deputy mayor and you have to trust that decision on them. Now, in this case, with it being Banner Fox picking me, I haven't been around pretty much just as much as he hasn't. That's why I mentioned at the beginning of this, why I'm stepping down from my position as well. Because I do believe that the city needs a position, needs a mayor that'll be able to actually show face around here. Someone that cares about the city. But if you're voting for somebody, make sure that you are instilling your level of trust into them. You know, appointing a mayor is, you know, it's not against the law. It's in the constitution that they are to appoint a mayor. You have to trust that decision with them if you're voting for them. That's all I'll say on that.
Yeah, and I completely agree that, yes, the mayor, as the constitution's written, the mayor does select a vice mayor to take over and take over their duties in their absence. And that, uh, and I believe only time it's written, or there's two instances where the vice mayor would take over, which is one upon the death of the mayor and secondly, if they're, if they are not qualified for the position. So, like I said, though, it's, it, I just have a bad feeling in my gut when it comes to at voting somebody in and they can just select whoever they want, so long as they're not, I believe, just a violent felon. Maybe it's just a felony charge. I'm not exactly certain of that. I gotta double check the constitution. But they can disappoint who they want and and yes, there is a level of trust, but if they are absent for, you know, a significant portion of their, you know, of their election cycle, then who do the people actually vote for?
Do you even know the reason as to why Mr. Banner Fox hasn't been around?
That's his personal business and I don't think that's.
Yes, personal business, exactly.
Uh, that's, but that's the thing. It's one-fourth through his mayoralship. He has not been here. And this is the first time we're seeing you in all of this. Or actually a one, a one, a, a one AM letter through somebody else to try and have a meeting at one o'clock in the morning.
I'll let you, uh, let you speak.
Uh, Chase Reeves, ex-mayor. Uh, this is a couple, a couple of things. Your former, former mayor. Uh, there's a couple, a couple of things here you guys are talking about. One is the representation aspect of this. By Banner being elected mayor, he is representing everyone that voted for him. By them voting him in, they are also assuming that he, in all of his decisions, are for the people. And, and in the heart for the people, right? So when they appointed the deputy mayor, deputy mayor is appointed by the people because the people are represented by the mayor. I'm not gonna go over the same spiel that I did last time, but it's a representative democracy. So these appointments, I don't know where the stigmatism came from of these appointments that it's a bad thing. It's not a bad thing. It keeps the, it keeps the wheels moving. That being said, the council does have every right to put this vote to relieve the deputy mayor of his duties as well as the mayor. I just really caution the idea that anyone appointed is not the will of the people. The will of the people spoke. They voted those people in and those people decided to make a decision who to appoint on those positions and either gets filled. Um, I think the question before the council is what is best for the city right now? Not what will be better in a week, what is good for the city right now? Because the engagement, the level of engagements that you guys have currently is gonna wane unless you guys do something with it. But that's all, that's all I'm gonna say about that. Um, congratulations to everyone that got onto the council. Hope you guys do something with it. Um, yeah, read the constitution.
What's up? Anything to say?
I mean, I would like to hear if anyone.
I'd like to open up the floor to the people at this point.
Real quick, uh, uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor, didn't you say when you started speaking that you were gonna be stepping down and that we were gonna have elections or?
Uh, I, that's dependent on how this vote of no confidence goes through.
Right, if there's, uh, if it passes, it's a fourteen-day election.
Yeah, so.
We can't, we can't just vote in a new mayor without a vote of no confidence.
No, I, I understand that. So what's the problem then?
Well, the problem is Banner Fox. Either way, whether I step down, he is still the mayor. Uh, unless you all vote for a vote of no confidence, then I'm still in this position here. Uh, and it's gonna be a running circle until you guys decide what you wanna do about that. We can't do the election for a new mayor that'll actually be around for the city, uh, unless a vote of no confidence goes through.
Uh, yeah, I'm all there, but, but what I'm getting is that you would have to stay, you, you, are you arguing that you would still be deputy mayor, that we would assume the mayoralship at that point?
Uh, would you rather Banner Fox stay in his mayor position and me step down and there be absolutely nobody to show face?
Well, I think that's, isn't that what you guys are saying?
No, we're, well, we would maintain.
So he would have to stay for fourteen days, but he's gonna leave. If Banner goes, he's gone too.
Mr. Williams. Ashley Williams, Attorney General and general swell guy. Um.
Agreed. Nice.
Alright, let's, let's, let's just kinda cut to this. Let's, let's cut to it. Sounds like, uh, the vice mayor is gonna wanna step down at the end of the session. The reason he's here right now is because he wants to make sure there's some legislative lead into this. So that way it's not just him going, leaving you guys to your own devices. There's some leadership here. But it sounds like he's gonna step down after this. So the argument, Bob, that I know what you're getting at here is like, why do you care about the vote of no confidence? It's like you're gonna be stepping down anyway. Great. You guys can argue that after the session's done because it's not gonna matter. You're right. So the question really before you guys, because Gilbert didn't actually put forward a vote for this, there needs to be a vote of no confidence brought to the mayor. That's what needs to happen this session. And then once that occurs, Al would then be kicked up to mayor or he put a vote of no confidence on his position, he's gone too. And then at that point, that triggers that two-week election cycle. We kind of all clear on that? Is that all making sense?
Yeah, I was gonna call for a vote after all the discussion, right?
Okay. It feels like there's already been discussion in the room and I don't think there's really, I mean, yeah, you can have more discussion around this, but like as far as my, my sense is, I agree with, uh, you, Doc, and probably the rest members. If you're not here, you can't represent. Just how it goes.
Exactly. And. I think we're just giving people a chance to speak, uh, from the, from the public before we went to this. This is why we were holding off.
Sure, sure, but if there's a ground swell, people like, no, don't, don't get Mr. Banner Fox out of there. Second, change anything?
No.
No. Alright, let's just get to, to it then.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley.
Then let's, uh, I'd like to call for a vote. No confidence in the mayor.
Alright.
Mr. Robert Banner Fox.
Vote of no confidence in Mayor Robert Banner Fox?
Uh, no.
Aye.
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 My vote, aye as well.
Alright. You already have two. See as Mr. Robert Banner Fox is no longer mayor. That in turn bumps me up to that position and like I said at the beginning, you need someone that'll be willing to be around, someone that doesn't have a out-of-whack schedule and someone that can show face that cares about this city. Uh, and as much as I love this city with all my heart, that is just not me at this time. Uh, so after this session, I will be stepping down and let that trigger the fourteen-day election cycle to pick your new mayor. Uh, so after this session, I will be stepping down and let that trigger the fourteen-day election cycle to pick your new mayor.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Hey, you did a better job than I did, Deputy Mayor.
Alright. Before we finish up here, does anybody else at the council have anything that they wanna address?
Have the council members got more business, this is it?
Oh, yes, actually, let me talk to the BBB. I'm getting there, hold on.
Okay.
Finish up, we're not voting now, so we're waiting again, right? Or what? Okay.
Yes. Uh, good afternoon, everybody, uh, Timothy Bradford, uh, BBB, uh, and council member. Uh, I'm going to bring this to everybody, uh, I am, myself, Gilbert, uh, Savannah, are all here representing the Better Business Bureau. Um, I'm gonna speak to you guys, cuz a lot of you are business owners. We urge you to please. Please, get with us, mail us, and register your business. In these next coming weeks and or days. We will be going through the businesses and updating everything. What that means is, is if your business is not registered, and we've give people ample amount of time to register. Your business can be taken from you. We do not want to do that, and we urge you to please get with us, make sure your business is on file, even if you know it's on file. Could get with us again and resend it in, and we will verify with you. We want you to keep your businesses, and they have to be active, running businesses. We'll be checking through them, checking all of our dates, crossing our Ts, dotting our Is, and making sure all those businesses are running correctly. And actually running. So I urge you to please put in that form, speak to us after the meeting, or send a mail to BBB, and we will get to them. And get through them here soon, we've been putting up flyers, we've been letting you guys know, we've been stopping by businesses, we've been setting up businesses. We've been moving things along, adding the new till. We are trying to do our best to help you guys as much as possible, there is a little bit of limitation. But we are doing our best to make sure that you have what you need to run your business. And we will let you know if something is within our grasp and we're able to do for you. With that, I'll be taking any questions, or myself, Gilbert, will be able to answer them for you. Please, ask questions.
Thank you, Timothy.
Again, still, Ashley Williams, hell of a guy, Attorney General, um, what do you mean by running your businesses correctly?
Uh, making sure that you are actively running your businesses, um, not having. An owner that is not going to be in the business itself. And having it ran via proxy, unless it's been talked to about. Uh, just get with us so we can make sure those businesses are actually running properly, that there's people running the, the business itself.
Okay, so there's a document that I can look at that defines properly.
Um, making sure your business is.
Gilbert, if you wanna help me out here with any of this, um, on that.
This, this is something that is actively being worked on right now, I'm currently working on. Writing everything up, which is why we haven't, you know, we're still just getting information from businesses our own, make sure they're registered before we start going through everything. Basically, what we're asking for is people who have businesses. Again, are actively running them, that means that they are present at their business, they are, you know, working on either events, hiring people. You know, being a part of the community and contributing.
Okay.
Not, it's, and, and unlike businesses where someone might just have a store up in. You know, let's say in Sandy, for example, no one goes there, no one stocks it up. And it's just sort of, it's just sitting there barren, like, those are businesses that we're going to be removing. And despite them, you know, if they are owned.
Okay, um, so, yeah, we will be, you, you will be posting definitely timelines of when you're expecting less things and when. They will possibly be pulling back people's businesses, based off of non-licensure.
It's not, it's not gonna be a surprise or anything like that, we will give people ample time. It'll be posted on the bulletin board, and we'll also be going around to businesses individually.
Okay.
Up notices.
And you will have a firmer.
People as much as we can, yes, we'll have a firmer definition.
Yeah, cuz like, yeah, we did that correct and properly when coming from a government agency, when you're talking about small business. Makes my blood, blood a little cold, bud, like, it's, uh, make me worried a little bit.
Those definitions will be before people are penalized, correct?
We're, we're trying to, and like I said, we wanna work with people as much as possible. And I know certain situations, and we're gonna talk with those people with certain situations, and we're working with them. We just wanna make sure all the businesses are currently up to date, we're trying to give people that time to get those forms in, it's a. Five-minute form you have to fill out, and we can get you your license and everything, and you guys are up to date. And we can start looking at everything else, we just wanna get those forms filled out, so we know what businesses are available, so when new people come into the city. They know, hey, let me go to the BBB to see what I can purchase, or how I can acquire this type of business, we want to help the new blood come in. And build the city bigger and better, and get those, point those people to the right people.
Oh, I mean, that all sounds good, I'm just, uh, I, I get worried when, uh, yeah, I hear you need to have a business being running correctly. Um, coming down from a bureaucrat, it's, it's, it's just concerning, that's all.
Poor, poor words on my choice, and I'm sorry to say that, uh, Ashley, but that was a, a poor verbiage for me.
Okay, well, I look forward to seeing documentation from you guys coming, in the coming weeks, alright, that's all I got, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, hello, Henry Johnson, uh, business owner, specifically Shell Shop PI. Uh, so effectively, my question regards, uh, the. Business license fee and taxes, I haven't heard anything about that in quite some time. I was wondering when businesses might expect that to come into play, or has that been just sort of, I guess, for lack of a better word, eliminated?
Uh, Timothy, do you have anything on that? Uh, yes, I'll listen and see if Gilbert's gonna answer that, or I was, so for right now, you wanna go ahead and answer that, go ahead.
Yeah, so right now, all we're asking for people is the five hundred dollar, um, business license fee. Right now, there are currently no plans to have taxes implemented in the future. We will be discussing this, but right now, we want to get people owning businesses, have them, you know, running. Uh, have them be successful prior to, you know. Putting any taxes or other things in place that may hinder their performance.
Alright.
A lot of people were concerned with like twenty-four sevenths in the smaller businesses. But it came to, uh, the tax plan that was originally thrown out a long while ago from the BBB initially. But that is not our intentions. And, uh, except we're going to be, again, writ, writing all that stuff out. It's just right now, we're focused on getting all the businesses in our books, that way, we know what is and is not available still. So we can, that way, we can have a list for people who are interested in running businesses and purchasing businesses. They can see, you know, to talk to us about how we can help them get those up and running. So taxes, something in the future, not right now.
Alright, that pretty much answers my question, thank y'all.
Well, I, I mean, yeah, I got a question real quick, uh. You, you say some of the things aren't up and running, but, you know, there is a way some people can get the help with their businesses, isn't there, right now?
You're referring to your. The Chase Your Dreams Foundation?
Oh, the Chase Your Dreams Foundation, yeah, so if you're interested.
Is this an advertisement, or are we going to the council stuff?
Asking him a question, you know, or affirming there is a way to help businesses right now.
Yeah, there, there are multiple avenues to seek help. There's the, was it Chase Your Dream Foundation, I believe it's called.
Yeah, the Chase Your Dream Foundation, that's what it's called.
As well as, you know, talking to the business bureau, we are currently setting up meetings with people, if you have any business idea, we'll see if we can get it to work. And, uh, yeah. And I think there might be some other places, um. Or some other people that help like privately, but. I can't recall them off the top of my head.
Are you done, Robert?
Yeah, thank you, sorry, I didn't know you were going, I thought you were stretching your legs.
Uh, no, because I, I'm up here as a citizen and not a councilperson, otherwise, I would've stayed in my seat. Um, how long could we expect after we have filled out the form? Uh, to actually get our license, cuz I don't believe I've received my license yet for POPS. And I filled out that form probably two, two and a half weeks ago.
Have you sent some mail to the BBB, um, we are working on many forms at this time. And we can just, it'd be a quick conversation of us get you down there, you're not the only person we're trying to get him to. We have a lot of people we're trying to, and we're backlogging it, and getting them in there, we already have you on file, your system's already in there, we just have to get you the form itself. And, uh, collect if you have not paid, but it's just a simple, send a mail, we can tell, get set up a time to meet and get that form to you.
Okay, so I'm just saying this for the citizens out there that have maybe submitted a form, it, it's gonna take a minute. So you're not gonna close anything while people are doing what they do. Doing their due diligence and submitting forms and things, and, okay, just need to make sure. Okay. Go to POPS.
We're, we're not trying to be the people that just try and take businesses away from people, that's not our job. We're, I mean, it is, but at the same time, we want people to run those businesses, we want to see them active and going, and we wanna help y'all as much as possible. So, we're trying to work with everybody as best we can, so you have the tools you need to run your business.
Alright, uh, Ch- Chase, yeah, Chase Reeves again. Um, yeah, you were talking about the Chase Your Dreams Foundation, basically, all you need to do, we do help businesses out, we've helped out. Uh, multitude of brick and mortar, um, places as well as, uh, service-based. Uh, businesses, all you need to do is have a business plan, um, send it to us. Um, get ahold of through POEX seven-one-seven, just have a business plan, we'll look, take a look at it. And, um, our board will take a look at whether or not it's viable, and whether or not we want to give, uh. Give the grant out for it, but it's pretty straightforward, just make sure you have your contact information, and we'll, we'll listen to whatever idea. Um, that is, uh, that is feasible. Alright, thanks.
Thank you, Chase.
You're welcome.
Hi there, uh, Fiona McConnell, I have a question about funding, what oversight is there on where the funding's going to?
Uh, for what, my foundation?
Yeah, for, well, for that and for the BBB, like, is there, is it public record, is it, like, how, how do, how do people know? You know, where the money's going, I guess, it's my question.
Well, I mean, my foundation isn't, isn't public.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I.
The BBB is a different story.
I would be the oversight for the foundation, cuz I donated the money, so. I trust Chase implicitly, so that's, I, I, whatever he does, I. From his, being his deputy mayor and seeing what he did for the city, I know his heart's in, in, in it for the city, and I trust him implicitly, so. I would be his oversight, and he, he does what he does with the money.
Thank you, Fiona. Alright, is there anything else from the people? Councilman, do you have anything else to add?
Sal, you can.
Uh, give me one more second, me, uh, go one more time.
Is Sal, Sal, were you whispering?
Yeah, sorry, I was just asking Tim a question about.
Uh, sorry, one more thing that, uh, I did slip my notes here, um, one thing that we were going to bring to the table, we are gonna draft it up. But is a system. For a mailing system for council, allowing the public to be able to have a public mailbox to mail the council. Um. As it, as itself, uh, as a no pay, it's a no-pay job, it's just a mailbox set up through the city to, where you guys can send. Questions, comments, concerns to the city council, so we can have another way of you guys being able to, the public being able to contact us. Um, I was gonna wait to. For us to draft it up before we present it, cuz that's something that would have to be brought in and voted on.
Uh, I just wanna give a little, uh. Little input on that, um, as far as I know, uh, I tried to do something similar back when I sat on city council, it was about, uh. Getting a post office set up on the, uh, northern side of the city. Uh, when it comes to getting new mailing structures set up, I don't think that's within the power of city council to be able to do. Uh, I'm not sure if that's actually gonna be able to. You know, be worked on, but we can, we can definitely discuss it and see what, uh, what can happen with that.
We believe, um, that we'll work on it as best as we can until we are told not to work on it, that's, that's what I believe.
Okay, that's fair. Uh, whenever you guys have a competent mayor in this seat, uh, I just wanna say. Why, why, why wouldn't they just be able to mail the mayor's office? And then the mayor relays the questions back to you, or the deputy mayor relays the questions back to you?
Uh, because we have situations like we have right now, where this is probably the first time I've seen you in, what? A month plus. Where we need to be able to have a mailing system where all the council members can see and talk to each other proficiently, and get these. Allow citizens to ask us questions on the, when they want to ask us questions, and help them get in contact with us better.
Perfect, thank you.
That the mayor would also have access to, since he technically is, you know, overseeing.
Yes.
Yes, yes, it's more so if we were, another thing I was thinking, it's like if we were put onto the, if we had access to the mayor's. You know, PO. Then we'll be able to see anything that's also meant to be private to the mayor. Which we don't want, but, you know. But ju- try to eliminate as much of that as we can.
Separating the two bodies.
Exactly.
Makes sense. Is that something that's doable?
We're gonna work until we know it's not.
Yeah. I like that idea, Tim.
Hi, can I talk now?
Hi there.
Hi, Savannah Moore, question, why would you guys need? Hi, Savannah Moore, why would you guys need your own private mailbox when that's literally what the city mailbox is for? It's for the people to send in their letters and questions to that mailbox, you guys already have one.
We don't have, I don't have access to it.
Well, that's what the receptionists are for, is to pass along that information and make sure you guys are getting it.
So, non-council members are allowed to see city council letters?
I'm not saying they are, but maybe that's a conversation you should have, because instead of trying to figure out. And hoping to make a new mailbox, why don't you guys just figure out a way to access the one that's already there?
Well, there is a way, you know, but if.
God damn.
Along with that, you know, we're on a payroll, now we're getting paid to do this job.
Oh, if you're on a payroll, then yeah, that.
No, no, we're, we're not, and we've already talked about this yesterday, we will not be taking a pay for that. It is strictly a job for, to check the mailbox, there will be no pay for that. That is one thing we've talked about and wanna make adamant. This is not a paid position.
Yeah, I agree, I don't think it should be.
Position.
I agree one hundred percent. But to go on the mayor's, go on the mayor's payroll, you gotta make a wage, to my knowledge.
So make it a five-dollar wage.
That's a problem with that. Cuz I agree, we should not be paying.
Yeah, make it a five-dollar wage, then you guys can clock in and you can access the city mailbox.
Well, the thing is, is that the mailbox for city also has other things for other departments, where this would just go strictly to council members.
Nope, there's a city, there's a DOJ, and there's a mayor mailbox.
They're saying it should go to mayor then.
Right, mayor stuff goes to mayor, the city, the people, the quest, the questions that people have for the city, and for the counselors, could go to city.
See, I.
I do like that idea a lot better.
Again, you have something that's already here and working, use it to the best, use it to your advantage, you know, it's here, it's there. Take advantage of it, that's what city mail is for.
Hey, if we can get access to it, I'm all for it.
Okay, that's it, that's all I had to say.
Good lord.
I'll donate, I'll donate my, my wages. That's an excellent point, a very excellent point.
That's why Savannah made that point.
Damn, she's smart.
I mean, I only worked up there for how long?
You weren't expecting to get paid, were you?
Like, uh, councilman. Like, uh, Councilman Bradford said, you guys are working on drafting something up. Uh, keep working together on that. See what you can pull together, uh, until you're told not to, I guess.
Think somebody left the fucking window open.
We good on that?
Sounds good.
And we're good.
Yep, yep.
Alright. Anything else from the people tonight?
Wait a minute, we're not done with the calendars, the councilman yet.
Alright, Day Nob?
Robert Day Nob, hey guys, what's up? Man, is that rain loud or what? Uh, yeah, it is.
What?
Yeah, it is. Hey, uh.
I speak louder, Day Nob.
Hey, I'm screaming as loud as I can right now.
Okay.
But, uh. Yep, uh, first off, you know, it's really funny that, uh, this happened at the beginning of the council meeting. Because, uh, I've been taking a great interest in the, uh, constitution lately. And, um, I scanned it over before, but I really, really got into reading it and. I realized there's a lot of things in the, uh, constitution that are outdated, uh, needs to be amended. And, uh, and, yeah, and just to, you know, the, the, just a quick example is. You know, it says that the mayor is allowed to have up to fi- or five votes. Well, it's been three votes forever. That needs to be changed. There's a lot of wordings and things like that. Um, from reading that, I realized that, uh.
You're gonna piss off Ashley, come on.
That, uh, that we do have a, a, a lot of responsibility in this council. And, uh, we need to handle that responsibility responsibly. And I'm, I am one hundred percent behind doing that. I want, uh, trying to make this. Uh, changes, uh, which, to be honest with you, aren't a lot of them. Uh, the basis of the constitution is incredible, I think. Um, you know, but I, I look forward to, to doing this with every one of you. I think, uh, even, even making it a public forum to where the potential mayors can put their views on what they think. The constitution look, could be abridged. Um, more people that are interested and read the constitution and know the constitution, the better government we're gonna have.
Is this an idea that you're gonna have to, uh, try and revert the constitution or you're gonna actually, uh, put the, put to the ground and do it?
Well, like I said, uh, you know, I, I, this is just something that's, that's in a, we all agree, some things need to change in it. Um. This is just, let's put up a plan to tackle this and, and work together to, to, to make this, to, to make it. Um. If you're talking, I can't hear you.
I just wasn't sure if this was just another, uh, Day Nob idea, or if this is something you're gonna try and work with and do.
No, I mean, I'm in agreement with them.
Yeah, I, I, in fact, what I said, and a bunch of people said that, this, uh. I don't, I, I'm, but I'm sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, of course, like, city council, yes, we can push our ideas and changes that we think should be implemented. I believe at the end of the day, it still falls down onto the chief justice. To actually get, make sure everything is proper implemented. So this is us gonna be working with the DOJ. With, you know, city council, with the mayor, everyone, just to clean things up and make sure it's updated.
Oh, one hundred percent agree. Yeah, yeah, I, I think, like I said, all the, I think the more input, the better. So everybody has an understanding of where everybody's coming from.
Is this something that you want to, uh, work on as soon as possible, or is this something?
No, this is, no, no, like, like I, like I said, I think we should start work, I think it's a priority one. Because, like I said, it gives the mayoral candidates a, an opportunity to debate about their ideas for the constitution. Uh, that'll, you know, that'll, that'll go a long way. That'll, that'll, you know, to see what their views are. Of, of picking the right candidate. I, I like, I'd like, I'd like nothing better than the, somebody mentioned something about getting together on Tuesday. We haven't tackled that yet, but. If, if we wanna do Tuesdays and Saturdays when everybody's available, just to do forums on the Tuesdays for people to hear us talk about and have to bring up their ideas. I'm all for it.
Ratification at its finest. You love to see it.
Well, I, I, I don't know what you guys are saying cuz it's raining so loud, I can hardly hear.
They're supporting you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, the other, the other, the, the other thing that I'm gonna bring up, which I can't believe I'm the person bringing this up. Since it wasn't brought up yet, is, uh, the quorum. Now.
Neil brought that up.
Did he?
Yes.
He brought that up.
Yeah.
Oh, brought up the three strikes rule.
You can do it again, it's fine.
Yeah, and I, I want you to know that sometimes we get heated up here on the council. And so we understand that you guys get heated out there in the audience. Trust me, I, I, I love it. But remember, we're, we're all just talking about our ideas here and our views. And, uh, this is what makes this country great is that we can talk things out and come to a, a solution. And, uh, that also means that, uh, apparently I can still wear a cowboy hat. But, uh, I promise that I can't, promise that I will not cuss, but I will try my hardest to have the quorum as far as my language. So, uh, with that, all I gotta say is, uh. Don't have, uh, coitus with loud animals.
No.
I swear to God.
So you're saying, don't follow in your footsteps? Don't do what he does.
Yeah, I don't fucking know.
At some point, we can probably let it drop.
At some point.
I guess not while it's still fresh in your mind.
Jesus fucking Christ.
Alright, anything else from our council members?
Casey or Sal, I believe you're the remaining.
I have nothing else. Anything else for the people tonight? Alright. I'll let this, uh, city council meeting be adjourned and just know that there is a rainstorm warning in effect.
You don't say. Elections in two weeks from today.
Correct.
Oh.
Kind of an important thing.
Remember vote Ashley Williams.
Don't you motherfucker.
Ashley Williams.
He's a, hey, listen, I even got the slogan, Ashley Williams, he's a hell of a guy.
Hell of a guy.
Gets it done by.
He's a hell of a guy. You got it, brother.
Hey, Charlie.
How you guys doing?
Hey, uh.
I'm doing good. We got a, uh, meeting coming up.
Hear anything all the way back here?
Kind of.
Yes.
Okay, we wanna go down to DA or do we wanna go somewhere nearby?
I think Ashley'd make a great mayor.
Uh, either, I mean, everybody's already here, it makes sense.
I think he would, I think he would make a great mayor.
I don't know what the meeting's about, though.
Who's gonna be the sole lawyer in the city? Who's gonna be the sole lawyer?
I would love nothing better to give you crap.
You okay, Adam?
Yeah, let me just go remind the people who, uh, might not have.
Let's see if we can maybe pull a side room in or something.
Remember that apartment that I had talked to about? You said, yeah, you have no idea.
I have to go to a short meeting real quick. I don't know what you guys are doing.
Could you possibly look and see? If you could find out where it is, because I just had a, I, what I'm gonna do with, uh, you know, the foundationers and citizen kindness, fuck.
Jesus.
I'm going to have a contest, uh, that I'm gonna run starting tomorrow.
Okay, I mean, just send me a letter if you have to stay around.
Sir, I think possibly Andy and I are gonna be going and talking about getting me a job, you know, maybe, I don't know anymore. Cause apparently now they wanna hire somebody to check mail without paying.
postal code and their date of arrival and.
Well, we can talk more about that.
Okay.